The COVID statement first before we open the meeting. So due to the COVID-19 pandemic, Governor Walz under Minnesota statute, Chapter 12, Emergency Management, declared a peacetime emergency on March 13th, 2020. The city has determined an in-person meeting may not be practical or prudent because of the health pandemic. The City of Detroit Lakes meetings will be held via telephone conference call or by other electronic means as outlined in Minnesota statute 13D dot zero two one. Members of the public who wish to view the meeting virtually should submit a request to the City of Detroit Lakes. The City of Detroit Lakes City Council meeting will be a hybrid meeting taking place with two options. You can attend in person at the Historic Homes Center Ballroom located at 806 Summit Avenue, or you can attend virtually. Again, you would have to submit a request prior to this evening. So with that, I will call the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda, I would like to ask you to all rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The minutes of the regular city council meeting held January 12th and the minutes from the city council workshop held February 1st, 2021, or before the council. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any additions or changes to the minutes as they're printed? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for their approval.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting and the city council workshop. And I'll take a roll call vote. Winner?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Mark Sirikson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
The motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any deletions or additions to the consent agenda as it's printed?
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
Dan Winter here.
Yes, Dan.
I asked Chief Pond and Chase Swanson to provide us with update during the public safety portion of the meeting tonight.
Okay. So I don't think we need to... We'll just go ahead and do that, Dan. You could just call on them. So I don't think we need to alter the consent agenda.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. I'll take a roll call vote. Josephson?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Mark Sirikson?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
The motion carries. At this time, I'll adjourn the regular meeting. Call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed street and utility improvements for the 270th Avenue project. And I'll call on either our city administrator or our city engineer to explain this to the council and to the public.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. Give me one second here. We need to have a quick public hearing for some proposed improvements to a portion of 270th Street. This has some connection to the Lake Forest project, and I'll explain that here in a moment. So, purpose of the hearing tonight, it's a requirement of state statute 429. We certainly want to get any input, concerns, questions from property owners that would be affected by this project. So we'll go over existing conditions, what we're proposing to do, some of the estimated costs, special assessments, and then we'll have an opportunity for comments and questions at the end here. So a little background on this. When we did the public hearing for the Lake Forest Eighth Edition project a couple of months ago, we had some property owners inquire if the city'd be willing to make some improvements, street improvements to 270th Avenue that were actually a little bit beyond what we were planning to do within the scope of the Lake Forest project. We had one in person, and then I also had a phone call. So to that, we did take a look at it a little bit. It's about a 750-foot-long segment just south of the new park on 270th Avenue. The unique part here is this is a roadway that's under joint jurisdiction with Lakeview Township. In other words, the east, the properties on the east side of the road are within the corporate limits of the city, and the property on the west side of the road is in Lakeview Township. But we could complete these improvements with the Lake Forest project if we chose to move ahead with that. So we completed and adopted an addendum to the preliminary engineering report at the January council meeting, and then set the hearing for this evening. As far as existing infrastructure, there's no sewer and water underneath this section of 270th, and none is proposed as part of the Lake Forest project. I suspect that at some point in the future, we'll be looking at putting sewer and water under here, but that'll be driven probably by development south of Lake Forest or otherwise. So right now, there is no immediate plans that we would install sewer and water. Again, the only other exception would be if we had folks from the neighborhood starting to request that, but at this point, they haven't made any indications to that effect. So as far as the street goes, we've got an existing rural section, 24-foot wide, very typical township-type road. It's in fair condition. It's certainly starting to show its age a little bit. It's got some cracking that's pretty typical of a street of that age. It's a solid subgrade, just some pavement that's starting to get wore out, get a little rough, a little rough to ride. So as far as what we're proposing to do, we looked at, you know, a number of options just for the purpose of being thorough. You know, normally, we would go in under, you know, city standard would be to construct probably an urban section roadway closer to 36-foot width, or maybe even a little wider in this case. But we really don't think any sort of a more complete type of a reconstruction is warranted. We wouldn't want to do that in advance of putting in that sewer and water, put all that money into the street, and then five years from now, go and rip it back up. So reconstruction really wasn't a viable option. We looked at full-depth reclamation, which is a pretty cost-effective way to improve the road. It's kind of along the lines of a very heavy rehab, but you're probably looking at an improvement that could last 15 or 20 years, and in my mind, that's maybe pushing it a little further than we'd want to from the standpoint that it's certainly possible that we'd be extending sewer and water down that segment sooner than that. So where we landed is just a very simple inch-and-a-half overlay. It's a pretty cost-effective solution. It certainly would extend the life of the existing road and improve the ride quality. So estimated costs, pretty straightforward here. It's about $26,000 for that 750-foot segment of roadway to do an inch-and-a-half overlay. As far as the financing and the funding on the project, it'd be split between the city, special assessments, and township funds. Like I indicated, the west half of the road is under the jurisdiction of the township, so they would be responsible for 50% of the project cost. Then the remaining 50% would be allocated between the city and special assessments in accordance with our policy. And our policy says that 75% of the cost of an overlay is allocated to the adjacent and benefiting properties, and the city picks up the remaining 25%. So when you do the math on that, this is how it shakes out. Township's looking at about $13,000. The city share would be about $3,200, and the assessable share at $9,750. So then we assess that $9,750 in accordance with the policy. Basically, we take the cost, divide it by the adjacent footage that's available for special assessment to determine a rate per foot. When we do that, you come out at about $12.50 per foot. So 100-foot lot, $1,250. 200-foot lot, double it, at $2,500. If we moved ahead, I need to confirm this with both city administrator and the finance officer, but typically on mill and overlays, we assess those over a term of about five years. Historically, the interest rate's been around 5%, but we haven't visited on that. So that would be something ultimately we would determine at the assessment hearing.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember if the last one, if we did seven years or was it five years?
Believe it was five.
Okay.
Believe it was five. So as far as the schedule, we, again, we approved the PER January. We have the public hearing tonight. If we move ahead here, we would turn a design around quickly and incorporate that with the Lake Forest project, which is on the agenda for approval tonight to authorize bidding. We'd take those bids probably in March, maybe April. Thinking we can do it in March. And then we'd have construction sometime this summer, followed by an assessment hearing in the fall likely. That is all I have, Mayor.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions or wish to make a comment regarding the proposed street and utility improvements for 270th Avenue? Yes, sir. And if you wouldn't mind coming up to the mic and give us your name and address for our minutes, please? You might have to speak into that mic because it's kind of hard to hear in here.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yep.
So I was at the meeting two months ago when you guys were talking about the city sewer and water. I don't know if you guys remember, and I reached out to John. I had mentioned at that time about if there was the possibility to do these street improvements just because the increased traffic that's going to be there with the next phase of this development. So my only comment on the proposal there with the fees on the assessment is that our situation is a little unique out there. Basically, I've been there since 2001 and been paying city taxes obviously the whole time. I went back and looked. I've paid about $20,000 in city taxes, and I guess my request is you guys maybe consider covering a higher percentage of this project, just due to the uniqueness of our situation and because we haven't had a lot of direct benefit, I guess, from those taxes, you know, plus on the roadway. The township has been plowing our road the whole time because they're already, like you said, with it jointly owned.
I'm sorry, but I'm having a hard time hearing you. Thank you.
Yep. So I was just asking you guys to consider maybe covering a higher percentage of this project, maybe not assessing as much to the property owners due to the uniqueness of our situation and where we are, that we're annexed into the city, don't have services, of course. At the last meeting, I mentioned that for those of us that are out there that have, you know, functioning septic systems and wells, we didn't want to do that at this time, but we are interested in the overlay just because of the increased traffic that we're expecting out there on that road with the next phase of this development.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience tonight that wishes... Carrie, do we have anybody that is zooming in on this? Okay. So that's it for the comments, so I'll close that public hearing, and I'll get back to the council for discussion and/or a motion.
I want Carrie to put the screen back again.
Oh, that's me.
So is there any one of the council members that wishes to make a motion at this time?
Well, I have a question first. John, have you gotten any feedback from the township?
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up, Madeline. Kelsey and I have been in contact with Lakeview Township. I went to their board meeting last month, and we heard back from them here today, really. Initially, they had proposed that we pay their portion of the project cost, the $13,000, and in exchange, they would take over the maintenance on the roadway for eight years, plowing, seal coating, sweeping, things of that nature. We countered on that and said, let's switch that. You guys continue to pay your half of the project, but we will take care of the maintenance in the way of plowing, seal coating, et cetera. And Phil Hanson is the chair of the township, and he was going to take that back to his board. I suspect we won't have a firm commitment on that until next month. And I guess my proposal would be that if the county or if the city wants to proceed with this project, that we still approve the project, authorize the bidding. I can go to bids with this along with the Lake Forest project, and next month, I'll bid it in a manner that we can drop it out of the bid if we don't reach an agreement with the township.
Okay.
Understanding that we would do it that way, the Public Works Committee did discuss this yesterday, and we will move to order the proposed street and utility improvements.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution ordering the proposed street and utility improvements for 270th Avenue. This will require a four-fifths vote. Is there any discussion by the council regarding the motion? Hearing none, I'll take it.
This is Jamie. Just clarifying, this is pending approval by a township per John's remarks, and also the property owners pay according to the presentation this evening, right?
I believe that's what Madeline's motion was.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion. I will take a roll call vote. Winner?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Mark Sirikson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
The motion carries. At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the matter for the proposed vacation of a portion of the dedicated public road in the plat of Pocagama Beach in the area of 1346 East Shore Drive. I believe this would be Larry. Is this something you could explain to the council?
Yes. This started with a request from 1346 East Shore Drive to vacate a portion of the right-of-way. The city has had this area surveyed, and there's a 6,101-square-foot area that we are willing to vacate. There is a new resolution that Kelsey has, the one in your packet, had one legal description in one portion of the resolution and a different one in another. We have those both matching now, so that we are vacating the 6,101-square-foot area.
I would entertain a motion... There's no one in the audience, so I'll close that public hearing, and I would entertain a motion to vacate that portion of the road on Pocagama Beach near 1346 East Shore Drive.
I'd make a motion to approve the consideration of resolution, the vacation portion of dedicated public road in the plat of Pocagama Beach, area 1346 East Shore Drive.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to vacate a portion of Pocagama Beach at 1346 East Shore Drive. Discussion? Take a roll call vote. Dahlman?
Aye.
Mark Sirikson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
The motion carries. Is there anyone else here this evening that has an item for the agenda that they'd like moved up? If not, we'll go right to the Community Development Committee Chairman Josephson.
Mayor, I'm going to be taking...
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
...CDC tonight.
Go ahead, Matt.
Item 5B, consideration to second reading and adoption of ordinance 474 of the annexation of a 1.13-acre tract of land in Lakeview Township and zoning a tract RM multifamily residence district at 1537 Legion Road. This is the second reading, and is there any other updates from Larry or Kelsey?
Unless there are any questions, I don't have anything further to add.
This was discussed at CDC, and I'd make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance 474 annexing a 1.13-acre tract of land in Lakeview Township and zoning it RM at 1537 Legion Road. I'll take a roll call vote. Mark Sirikson?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
The motion carries. Second reading is given, and ordinance 474 is adopted.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 5B, consideration to the first reading of ordinance 477, amending ordinance 473, annexing land to at 2655 Highway 10 West and 182 West Long Lake Road relative to Section 7 reimbursement to the township. Mr. Remen, could you give us an update on this, please?
Yes. When ordinance 473 was forwarded to the state for approval, they noted that we did not have any reimbursement to the township. Our argument was that it was included in an orderly annexation agreement, and reimbursement should have been covered at that time. But they felt that this section, which is a small strip of land that's outside of the section line, needed to be reimbursed, and so we have revised that section, and we are reimbursing the township for 100% of the taxes for five years. That amounts to $234.52 a year. So with that correction, the state will then go ahead and approve this once they receive this revised resolution for ordinance, excuse me.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Matt?
After discussing this at CDC meeting yesterday, we'd like to move item 5B for approval, consideration the first reading of ordinance 477.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give first reading to ordinance 477, amending the ordinance number 473 regarding the annexation of 2655 Highway 10 West and 182 West Long Lake Road. Discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Bokey?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Mark Sirikson?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else? Okay. We'll go to the Public Works Committee Chairman Sukie.
Item A, at our committee meeting yesterday, we had quite a discussion on the sidewalk policy regarding snow removal, and we just wanted to reiterate that the city cannot be responsible for removing snow on individual homeowners' sidewalks. We just don't have the manpower or the money to take care of that, and it has been that way for the last few years where the city is not doing that. So we're going to try to get the word out that that is not going to be a city responsibility to do that.
Good.
Item B is discussion regarding the stop signs at McKinley Avenue and Fraser Street intersection. As you may recall, last month, we did do some discussing about how we can make those stop signs more prominent so people are understanding that four-way stop and the responsibility they have at that four-way stop. And Sean did bring some quotes to us. John is going to also do some refining with those, and we will work the cost of those stop signs into the project that will take place next summer. Item C was discussion regarding seal coating and crack sealing, and our public works director just took us through a map that you'll find in your packet of what his schedule is for seal coating and crack seal. If anybody else wants to make any comments from the committee to any of those three things I just did, if I missed something, feel free to raise your hand and jump in. Hearing none, we'll move on to item D, consideration to a resolution to approve a grant application for Highland Drive. John or Kelsey, do you want to weigh in here and give us a little more information?
Mayor and council, so this resolution is basically just a vote of support to submit a local road improvement program grant application to MINDOT. We looked at doing a similar grant application in 2019, but we didn't obtain the support of Detroit Township, who is... We basically share the road authority there for Highland Drive with Detroit Township. This application is a little bit different. Becker County has been involved, and they're willing to assist Detroit Township in actually doing the grant application. So basically, the city would just be doing a resolution of support. The max grant is 1.25 million. Total project cost, I think, is just under 1.6 million.
Thanks, Kelly. Kelsey, the finance... Not finance, the Public Works Committee did discuss this at length yesterday, and we're certainly going to approve a grant application, and we move to do that.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution approving a grant application for Highland Drive. Discussion?
I just wanted to mention that John Pratt, our engineer, mentioned that the city share of this project is 40%.
No, no.
Okay?
No. No.
We have...
If 40% of the property along the Highland Drive is in the city.
Correct.
That's accurate. 40% of the abiding footage is in the city.
Yes.
Okay. Further discussion? I will take a roll call vote. Zeeman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Mark Sirikson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item E, consideration to a resolution ordering the preparation of plans and specs for Ridgeview First Edition and setting a public hearing for March 9th. Those of you that were in council last spring may recall, we would probably think of it as Burquist, the Burquist Edition. Is there anything extra you want to say, John, other than just our moving to order the preparation of plans and specs?
No, other than, just following up on the discussion yesterday, I will be reaching out to the developer with some updated costs as soon as we can get our arms around it because the existing cost estimate is from a couple of years ago. We'll want to update that. And probably more importantly is our special assessment policy has been revised since the time that we wrote that report, and it was revised in a manner that shifted more of that project cost on the developer and away from the city. So, for example, in the stormwater, we used to pay 100% of that, now we pay 50 and some other minor things. So I've mentioned that to him, but I will be reaching back out to make sure he is fully aware of that before we get too far down the road.
Okay.
Thanks for adding that bit of information from John. The Public Works Committee moves to order the preparation of plans and specs for Ridgeview First Edition and set a public hearing for March 9th, 2021 at 5:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to order the preparation of plans and specs for Ridgeview First Edition and setting that public hearing for March 9th, 2021. Further discussion?
I just wanted to mention that people have asked what kind of projects is this going to be, and it's going to be mainly single-family housing, but there will be some multi-family housing also.
Okay. Further discussion? I will do a roll call vote. Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Mark Sirikson?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item F, consideration to the first reading of ordinance 470 Yard Waste. And as you will recall, we've had some difficulty in the past with dumping at our yard waste site, and so this is in hopes of taking care of some of that difficulty.
this for several months now, related to some of the issues we've had at our yard waste site. So this ordinance does a few things. Um, last summer, we created a commercial user license and fee. This ordinance basically codifies that fee and license. It also creates the option, if, if the city council ever so chooses, to implement a non-resident license fee, as we've talked about, um, you know, part of the volume that we get out there, a lot of it is non-city residents that are, that are delivering there. Uh, and then lastly, the ordinance provides some different options for enforcement, including administrative penalties, which again, hopefully is just another tool in the toolbox for trying to, uh, enforce the rules that we have on the yard waste site.
Okay.
Uh, so the Public Works moves to, um, adopt that first reading of ordinance four seventy yard waste.
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to give first reading to ordinance four seventy regarding our yard waste site. Discussion? I will do a roll call vote. Dahlman?
Aye.
Mark Xerikson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
The motion carries. Madeline?
Yeah, I'm waiting for Kerry to move this.
Oh, okay.
Gee, uh, consideration to a resolution of support in approving the grant application made to the Minnesota DNR for the local trail connection program located on West Lake Drive from County Road six to the Pelican River. Um, we certainly wanna give, uh, support to a grant application of that type. So the Public Works moves to, uh, to give support to that grant application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution approving the grant application to the Minnesota DNR for a local trail connection grant on West Lake Drive from County six to the Pelican River. Discussion? Roll call vote. Spry?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Mark Xerikson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item H, consideration to the memo from the Public Works Director to accept quotes for the library roof repairs and award the contract to Pierce Lee Roofing LLC for ten thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars. Um, Sean informed us that, um, actually, I think this was, they went out for quotes last year and, and, uh, did not receive any, um, or postponed it. And this year, um, when they went out for quotes, they only got one quote. That is from, from Pierce Lee. So the, uh, Public Works certainly accepts that quote. And moves.
Is there a second?
Second it.
And that's also a budgeted item, right?
It is a budgeted item.
Excuse me. Further discussion? A roll call vote. Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Mark Xerikson?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Uh, item, uh, I is also a budgeted item, uh, memo from, uh, the Public Works Director to purchase a Toro Brown Master four thousand D, uh, from MTI for sixty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. This is being purchased on this, uh, on the state contract. Um, and we moved to, um, accept that bid and purchase that Toro Brown Master.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to purchase an expensive lawnmower. It's a budgeted item. Discussion on the motion?
Uh, what kind of lawnmower is that?
A big one.
A very big one.
Further discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. Winner?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Mark Xerikson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item J, consideration to approve the special event request from Chelsea Vader to host a wedding and reception in the city park at the band show on Saturday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, from one P.M. to ten P.M. After much consideration, lots of discussion, uh, the, uh, Public Works, uh, Committee is, uh, is moving to, um, to not allow this special event request to host a wedding and a reception in the city park at the band show. Just, uh, for, uh, for a number of reasons, but primarily, uh, it's just way too hard to control any kind of party atmosphere and that type of thing in the band show. People are, are welcome to rent the band show for a wedding, but not for a wedding and a reception hall. So we moved to, uh, I don't know if you disapprove, but anyway, moving not to approve.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to deny the request for a special event permit for a, uh, wedding, reception, uh, et cetera, in the city band show on June twenty-sixth. Just for clarification, this individual can rent the band show and have a wedding there without getting a special event permit?
Correct.
Okay. Further discussion? Motion is seconded on the, on the table. I'll do a roll call vote. Winner?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Mark Xerikson?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And, uh, last but not least, we'll call on, uh, John Pratt, our city engineer, to give us his monthly project status report.
Thank you, Madeline. Uh, I think we've touched on a number of these, so I'll skip over, uh, a, a bunch of them. But, starting off at the top, West Lake Drive, there's, there's always something to say on West Lake Drive. Um, we're making progress. We continue to move ahead with the design. We're probably somewhere in that seventy to eighty percent, uh, completed with the design, you know, heading towards a spot where we can submit the plans to MINDOT for review and approval and go out to bid. Um, I think we're a couple of months away from that at this point yet. Um, unfortunately, we are still, um, negotiating, I guess I would say, with, with property owners. Um, a number of them are, are still in opposition to the existence of the right-of-way. If you recall, the court ruled that we do have a sixty-six foot right-of-way. However, we're still, uh, stuck with the, the issue that we haven't been able to agree as to where the right-of-way is. And we're dealing with road orders from eighteen seventy-three, and so there's plenty of room for some interpretation and discrepancy and things like that. So, fortunately, we still are heading down that path and working on that. Uh, at the same point, the, the county is, uh, taking a parallel path that would allow us to go through condemnation on that remaining property, or the remaining properties if, if we needed to. So, we'll have to let that play out, but we're still heading down that road. Um, I don't, at this point, I mean, the, the crystal ball is foggy at best, but I, I think we're looking at, you know, a construction project that probably would not start until towards the middle of summer, and, and maybe that's not all that bad. Um, there, there are some perks with that, but I think we're looking at a second half of the summer sort of project, but still getting it done. Uh, West Lake Drive from County Road six to the Pelican River is the next one. Uh, just a few things to update. I mean, our capital improvement plan that we've looked at includes that for, for next year. It's also on the county CIP for next year. Uh, that project scope has, has grown considerably since we, we first started discussing it with just sewer, adding a sewer system. Now we're looking at, you know, a sewer collection system, probably some water main improvements, and full street reconstruction that would allow us to, uh, continue the construction of that trail to the Dunlop's Trail. So, um, pretty comprehensive project from that regard, and we'll see where that goes. The county's working on getting some funding that would allow us to examine the options for the trail alignment a little bit more between now and, say, June, as to which side of the road that trail's gonna go on. If you recall, we, I don't, we didn't really put that to bed. It could go on either side. And, um, we're sort of pros and cons to both. So, more to come on that. Uh, number three, the Burquist subdivision, I think we've touched on that tonight. Uh, number four, the South Washington Avenue project, not a lot to report there. We're continuing to make some progress on the, um, concept for the, the final design on that plaza area, the entrance monuments. Uh, with any luck, we'll be able to come back next month with a recommendation on that, so we can move ahead and get that completed, uh, this spring. Um, Long Pine Estates, nothing to mention there. Um, the Brisland subdivision, which is Tower Heights, I believe. Uh, that project, as far as I know, is progressing. Again, that's being developed privately outside of the city. Uh, they're preparing the plans and specs on that. Uh, the city awarded them some TIF funding last month. So, as far as I know, that's moving along, and I would expect that project to get constructed this summer. Uh, number seven is our large reconstruction project, the Willow Holmes Fraser project. We're probably seventy to seventy-five percent complete on the design for that. Um, probably coming back to the council next month for approval. Um, but there are a number of funding agencies and regulatory approvals that we have to go through on that. And, uh, sort of expect that we probably won't be opening bids on that until maybe May sometime, and starting on that, uh, in, in June or early July. And that will be a two-year project. Uh, and then last, we talked about the Lake Forest project, so I think that's it, unless there are questions.
Any questions for John? If not, thank you, John. Anything else, Madeline? Is that a no?
She's muted.
I'm assuming that's a no. So.
It wasn't. I'm sorry. I couldn't get it off.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the Finance Committee. Chairman Zeeman?
Okay, item A, uh, today we had a discussion on the food pantry building, which we all know where it's at in the fairgrounds. And, um, needless to say, that building has been really used and used and used to the point where it's about wore out. The, the, um, the Board of Directors from the food pantry came and met with the Finance Committee today, cause they're looking at, uh, replacing the current building they have, which is approximately two thousand six hundred and forty square feet. They'd like to build a new building for four thousand with, at four thousand eight hundred square feet in the North Industrial Park, uh, get one of our vacant lots that we have there. And, uh, they're looking at putting up maybe like a false building. They're just in the beginning stage, but they're out trying to see if they can get help from, uh, the city Detroit Lakes, as well as, uh, Becker County. And they're also planning on doing some fundraising. So right now, it's in early stages, but they're looking at, um, trying to get more room because that has been used so much now, and they're just running out of space. And so, we'll, we'll be hearing more about this coming down the road, but it's just discussion for the day. Uh, moving on to item B, that was consideration to accepting the Detroit Lakes Community and Cultural Center annual D L C C C financial statement and independent accountant's audit report for the year ending August thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Uh, Stu Humbert did a very good job of updating on us. As you know, they've had their trials this year because with COVID, a lot of it was closed down for both the theater side and as well as the recreational side. Uh, they're, they're starting to get, uh, people back in the recreational area again. And of course, this, uh, Saturday, there's gonna be an event in, in the theater. But they're, they're working to make things go, and, uh, we looked over their, their report, and everything looks fine, and they're making a motion that we approve their audit report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the Detroit Lakes Community and Cultural Center annual financial statements and the accountant's audit report for the year ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty. Discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. Josephson?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Mark Xerikson?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, uh, next item is item C. It's consideration to a, to a resolution approving a liquor license fee reimbursement, uh, for anybody in the city that has a local liquor license. They, they also have been closed up and cut back in the number of customers. And so the committee is recommending that we, uh, refund, uh, their liquor fees for, for two months, and that amounts to five thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars for each month, or comes out to a total of eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents of the actual total. Uh, so move that we go ahead and, and approve this resolution and fee reimbursement.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded approving, uh, a resolution refunding some liquor license fees. Discussion?
And just so I'm clear, it looks like we're just refunding January and February of twenty-one. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Further discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. Winner?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Mark Xerikson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, next item is item D, consideration to request from the Detroit Lakes Country Club for fourteen thousand dollars to assist with the cost of upgrading their fire alarm, uh, panel. Uh, their board member Blake came in and gave us an update on what they planned to do there, and it's a fourteen thousand dollar cost that they were expecting when they started doing some remodeling and so forth. And they would like us to pay half that, uh, project for, or seven thousand dollars, and the committee's recommending that we take that money from the liquor fund and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to, uh, give the Detroit Country Club seven thousand dollars for an upgrade to the fire alarm panel on their remodeling project, and those funds would come from the liquor store. Discussion? Do a roll call vote. Dahlman?
Aye.
Mark Xerikson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, Kelsey, did you have anything at all that you wanna add at all?
Uh, Mayor and Council, we just did a, a little bit of an update on the museum project. Um, project's kinda clipping along. Uh, they have some pretty aggressive goals, trying to get out to bid in the next month or two. Um, you know, the, ideally be in March. Obviously, there's a lot of things we still have to get done before then. You know, the site plan still needs to be approved. I know John's working on a revised site plan. Um, reason I bring it up is, probably for sure, see it in the March council agenda. Uh, but if things came together faster, where, um, they're gonna go out to bid, and if we had everything in, in place quicker, maybe we'd be looking at a special council meeting later in February, uh, to look at the site plan and, and maybe some of the agreements. So, more to, more to come later.
Okay, thanks, Kelsey. And I have nothing else, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll move to the Public Safety Committee. Chairman Winner?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have, uh, one item for consideration tonight, or to be decided on, NASA resolutions to accept a donation to the police department, a one thousand dollars for equipment. Uh, committee reviewed this, recommended approval and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution accepting a donation to the police department of one thousand dollars to be used for equipment. Discussion? Roll call vote. Bly?
Aye.
Mark Xerikson?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Bokey? The motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. As I indicated earlier, we asked both our, um, fire department chief and, uh, police chief to give us a little report tonight. So, um, is Chief Todd there?
Yes, he is. He's making his way.
All right, so he could give a, a little report on, particularly on how the bill progressed. That'd be great.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, building's coming along great. They've been doing a lot of painting on the main floor. Uh, a large, probably about ninety Uh, a large, probably about 90% of the, uh, mudding and taping is completed, and they're starting to paint mostly on the main level. All the interior, uh, masonry has been completed in the basement. Uh, they're pulling internet cable around on the main level right now. So we're getting closer and closer, and a lot of Kelsey and Maya's attention has switched to what are called owner-provided items. And we have, uh, quite a workload to do on the owner-provides, uh, throughout the project. But again, I'd invite any of you that are interested in seeing it, please give me a call or an email, and I'd be happy to walk you through the building and show you. But it's, it's coming along really well, and it appears that we're still shooting in that mid-April timeframe for completion. Does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, and then, uh, I asked, also asked Chief Swanson to address the council tonight, particularly to get on, uh, their plans for, um, uh, some building repairs that need to be done over at the fire department. Gee?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, um, as we talked last year, you know, we've kind of compiled a lot of, uh, maintenance, delayed maintenance stuff at the fire station, and, uh, um, this year Heidi has been able to, um, set the money aside for fixing the roof and, uh, windows and some block and mortar issues uh, in the structure of the building that have been falling behind. So, um, I did find when I was, first became chief, a folder that dated back to 2004 where there was an energy study, um, on some of the city buildings saying that the windows in the fire hall were in due need of, uh, repair at that time. So it's kind of a good thing that, uh, Heidi has been able to allocate some money to get some of these repairs done, and then she's setting some money already aside for next year for some other, um, deferred maintenance that is in dire need for the building. So is there any questions? Perfect, have a great night.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Um, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, thanks, Dan. We'll move to the Liquor Gambling Control Committee. Chairman Bokey?
Uh, item 9A was a discussion regarding the liquor store capital plan. Uh, we reviewed that, uh, talked about some items on there, but, uh, no action needed there. Uh, item 9B, uh, is consideration request from the Becker County Museum to sponsor 150th exhibit, uh, at the museum. Uh, Kelsey, if you'd like to fill us in on this topic, please?
Sure. Well, Mayor and Council, one of the early action items that we looked at doing part of the 150th committee was having the Becker County Museum do an exhibit kind of dedicated to the city of Detroit Lakes for the last 150 years. So basically, in your packet is a proposal to do just that, is the exhibit. Uh, also, I asked Becky at the museum to include some cost to assist us in putting together a time capsule. Uh, we've talked about doing some sort of dedication in July, which is our, our official, uh, 150th birth date is in July. We would do some sort of dedication ceremony, we would do the time capsule. So the $6,000 request would be both the exhibit and then the time capsule. Um, I just mentioned this too. Basically, we've, we've agreed to bring these items to the council as they come up, so this probably won't be the last 150th thing, because we didn't kind of set aside a, a set amount for it. So as these projects come up, we just bring them to the Liquor and Gambling Committee as we use liquor funds for paying for it.
Okay.
After consideration, we'd like to make a, a proposal for, uh, to support the $6,000 donation to the Becker County Museum, and I so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion and second to approve $6,000 for the 150th anniversary of the city for an exhibit and a time capsule. Further discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. Winner?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, item 9C is consideration to adding an additional full-time liquor store clerk. Uh, this is a budgeted item for 2021. Uh, with that, the Liquor Gambling make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the addition of a full-time liquor store clerk. Discussion on the motion? I'll do a roll call vote again. Josephson?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 9D, consideration to approve a permit to consume, uh, for Chelsea Bader, uh, for the wedding on June 26. This is, was discussed at Public Works as well, and, uh, there was a motion to deny this at Liquor and Gambling, and I so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to deny a permit to consume for the Chelsea Bader wedding on June 26 in the city park. Discuss, discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. Winner?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Motion carries, and the permit is denied.
That is all for Liquor Gambling, sir.
All right, thank you. So Madeline, was there anything that needed to come to the council on the Public Utilities Commission?
I don't believe so.
Okay. We need to give consideration to appointing a council liaison for the library board. Bruce Imholz was acting as the liaison, and of course, we know Bruce is retired. So I'm requesting if anyone in the council would be willing to serve as that liaison, to please give it consideration, let me know. Check with you next month. Consideration to a resolution extending the declaration of emergency. We just keep doing this for 30-day increments, is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
Yes, Your Honor. I mean, this is what allows us to have the Zoom meeting as well. And that's really, I think, at this point, probably a large, uh, basis for the reason. Other cities are, as we have been doing, just doing it on a 30-day cycle.
Okay. I would entertain a motion then for approval of that resolution.
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution extending the declaration of emergency through the end of the next city council meeting in March. Discussion on the motion? I'll do a roll call vote. I'm going to start with Matt Bokey.
No.
Okay, Winner?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Spry?
Aye.
Dahlman?
Aye, this time.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?